Good morning, everybody. My name is Suzanne Choffey. I'm director of the UCSD Retirement Resource Center, responsible for both the UCSD Retirement and Ameritai Associations. This morning, we are here to learn more about the CalPERS Long-Term Care Insurance Changes and Settlement. I want to let you know that this session is being recorded. It will appear on the UCSD Retirement Association YouTube channel by tomorrow morning. You can find our UCSD Retirement Association YouTube channel by going to YouTube and typing in UCSD Retirement Association into the search bar. We already have almost 70 programs there on our YouTube channel, but this will be the top seminar tomorrow morning. So if you have a friend or colleague who is not able to be with us today, they will be able to watch this in its entirety tomorrow. You are all welcome to subscribe to our YouTube channel and watch many other great programs that we have to offer. I also want to make sure I welcome our many retirees who are joining us from other UCs this morning. We're very pleased to have you with us. And now I'd like to introduce our presenter, Linda Yonkey. Linda Yonkey began working in the long-term care industry after graduating from the University of Iowa. Her family experienced firsthand the impact of nursing care expenses when her grandfather and aunt needed care for more than 15 years. She and her husband built a successful long-term care insurance agency after relocating to San Diego in 1989. Linda and Kevin have always focused on solving a problem for families rather than just selling insurance. Education and service is the cornerstone of their practice. Since Linda has only specialized in long-term care planning, she and her husband have recently expanded their practice to incorporate advocacy and care management resourcing for their clients. Linda is a board-certified patient advocate and currently serves as a board member of the Glennor Memory Centers of San Diego. Please join me in welcoming Linda Yonkey.
Hello, everybody. If you can please just shake your head or wave that you're hearing me okay? Thank you so much. Oh, it's so good to see you. And Suzanne, thank you for this opportunity. The first thing that I want to do before I pull up the PowerPoint and presentation is just set the tone for my perspective on how I'm going to speak to you about the situation. As Suzanne said, I have been in the long-term care insurance industry for almost 35 years now. So I am familiar with every single long-term care policy available. And I remember when CalPERS was first introduced. My practice now primarily is focused on patient advocacy. And what that means is when our clients or other people need care and want to file a claim, we manage that process for them. So I believe I'm in a little bit of a unique situation to talk about this topic because we actually have quite a few people who are on claim with CalPERS and we are managing that claim for them. And we're seeing how CalPERS is paying. In addition, I still sell long-term care insurance. So I know how much the coverage costs today and I know what's available today. And so what most people are asking me, my CalPERS clients in particular, is, well, can I get something else? How about if I just get something else? So I'm going to answer that today. And then the other question that I get asked a lot is, do they pay? Does CalPERS pay? Can I even count on this thing to be there? And I just want to say enthusiastically, yes, they do pay. CalPERS is paying claims. Now, the question about the issue of being underfunded or not being available in the future is something that I can't answer and I don't know, of course. But what I do know is what they're doing today and what options are available for you going forward. And so I'm going to talk for maybe 20, 25 minutes. And then I believe we're going to do a question and an answer. I hope that this presentation is going to be very simple, to kind of take away all of the stuff that might not matter and help you decide what you guys want to do. So I am going to put this up really quick. Okay, I can't tell if you can see this.
Not yet, no.
You cannot see it? Okay, bear with me. Okay, here we go. There we go.
Yes.
Excellent tape. Okay. So the first thing that I want to show you, let me put it on this one really quick. There we go. Next slide. So we have, you have three options. Suzanne, can you see this okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so in a nutshell, you guys, very simply, you have three options. Most of you have three options if you're in category A. Some of my clients obviously are on claim and so they are going to look at this a little differently. But I'm going to speak to you who are not on claim and who have the options before you to get a full refund, which is the first option, which means that you check that little box and you tell the settlement program, you either go online or you fill that paper out and you say you want your money back. And in doing that, you will have no more long-term care coverage with CalPERS. That's the first thing. The second option, and I'll go into a little more detail about each of these, but I'm just simplifying. The second option is that refund that you get, let's say you're entitled to $50,000. CalPERS will fund another potential long-term care insurance policy. So that money you did not get per se, but it would go towards a new policy. Now, I'm going to explain my thoughts on that. Again, I'll go into a little more detail. If you want to do that, you have to make that decision by the 22nd of September. And I do want to say, if you're comfortable going online, I have done this for some of my clients. It's very simple to go online and to put in the information and you get an automated email that says, we have your information. Thank you. What I would also say is, if you are completely unsure and you still don't know what to do, this is a safer option than doing the full refund at this point. If you're not sure what to do, number two is a safe option. And I'll go into detail about that in a moment. The third one is to opt out completely. That's the third option whereby you say, I don't want nothing to do with this settlement. I am going to keep what I have. And the deadline for that is the 13th of December. Now, the issue with that, of course, is you're getting rate increases. And so we have been helping people determine how they can mitigate that rate increase because they want to keep their CalPERS policy. And if that's you, I'm happy to talk to you about that, whatnot. But if you just feel as though you want to retain your CalPERS policy and I'll tell you who I think should be in that category, you want to mark the third box by the 13th of December and let them know and send it down. Okay. Perspective, like I said before, I have a little bit of a different perspective on this because I have clients that are actually getting money from CalPERS Long-Term Care Insurance. The first thing that I would say to you, no matter what, is when you purchased your long-term care insurance, you did it for a reason. And if you choose to take your refund, please have a strategy to pay for your long-term care. Do not just dump the policy and tell them you want to refund without a strategy. Now, sometimes when I've talked to people about this, they say, well, I'm so ticked off about, I'm so mad about this. I hate what's happening. They promised, they said, blah, 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 and I agree. And I say, yes, yes, yes. But you don't want to make this decision based on, out of anger, of course, or because you're annoyed, or because you're frustrated, or because you're mad. You want to make this decision only after you have determined that you can pay for long-term care in the future. You have a plan because that's why you bought this in the first place. Some people that I talk to say, well, you know, I bought it 20, 25 years ago and actually my circumstances have changed and I'm pretty sure that I'm going to be able to pay for my care. And to that, I would say, excellent. And that's okay because my clients find themselves in that situation sometimes too, where they'll buy long-term care insurance and their circumstance have changed and they, with their financial advisor, have decided that absolutely they can afford to pay for their own long-term care. And if that's your situation, or even if you have another long-term care policy that you bought, so maybe you have another one, then I would say wholeheartedly, you can check that first box and ask for a refund and terminate your long-term care policy. But please, just really think about why you bought it and what is your strategy to pay for care. The other thing is, and this is going to be in the next slide, it's important to know what kind of long-term care is available right now. As much as I hate to say this, rate increases, although are terrible, they're not completely unexpected. And I'll just give you a quick example. I've had my long-term care insurance policy since I was 37. I bought it when I was 37. And I'm 57, so I've had it for 20 years. Last year, I had a 95% rate increase. And when I tell people that, they're horrified. And I was horrified when I got the letter. But keep in mind, because I'm in this business, I understand and I'm looking at, okay, well, what was my premium back then? And what will it increase to now? And what are my benefits? And one of the reasons I wanted to show you some premiums for new coverage is for this reason. Even though your CalPERS premiums are going up, and thankfully, there's a way to mitigate that, it's still cheaper than what you possibly could get on the market today. In fact, there's no way that you could get the same amount of coverage with what is available on the market today. It's not possible. And so although your premiums are going up, and again, I'm not saying that's fair. And I'm not saying that it's extremely disappointing. You have to understand what's available on the market today is very expensive for people and it is hard to get. And so sometimes keeping what you have and mitigating those rate increases is a better option than trying to get a different policy. Then the last thing in terms of perspective, keep the big picture. And this is something that I just cannot emphasize enough to you. So I've had a couple calls about this. And of course, my clients or people that call me are very upset and they say, what should I do? I don't think we're going to keep this because I can get $75,000 back and I'll just put that in the bank and I will save it. And I say, okay. And I go through everything I've been sharing with you. And then I say, what's your age? And a lot of times, I'm talking with people that are over 75 or even in their 80s. And then I'll ask them, how's your health? And invariably, people say, I'm in great health. But then I start going down the list and I start drilling down a little bit more and I ask them, do you have any breathing problems? Have you had any surgeries? Do you have diabetes? Have you seen a specialist? Is there something new that you're taking medication for? And all of these questions start coming to people's minds and they say, well, I mean, I think I'm in good health for, for example, 88 years old, but I do have some problems. And what I tell people is, even though you feel good or you think you're not in poor health, if you have comorbidity issues like emphysema, diabetes, osteoporosis, any kind of potential cognitive impairment where you're getting some treatment or you're seeing a neurologist for anything like that, I would urge you not to drop your CalPERS policy. The other thing is a potential claim event. I can't tell you how many people I talked to with CalPERS and they tell me that they're not going to keep the policy and they're actually, or should be considering going on claim. A lot of people don't understand what it means to file a claim or what has to be happening with them to file a claim. A lot of times, especially when I'm talking with husbands and wives, one spouse is totally caring for the other person and they just don't recognize that they could get some help or support in their home. So perspective, make sure you've got a plan before you make your choices. Make sure you understand how much long-term care costs today. And look at your own life. Look at your health. Look at potentially what might be coming down the road for you in maybe a couple of years before you make that decision. So the next thing I want to show you is, I'm going to put that over there really quick. Long-term care options today. And I would say frankly, the only person who should be looking to replace their CalPERS is someone under the age of 65. If you're over 65, it's going to be super difficult to get you anything else. But what I wanted to do was I wanted to show you kind of a reality check of what's available. So what I did was I ran a quote for a benefit that's $5,000 a month. And so what that means is that you buy a new policy. Let's say you're in excellent health and you say, I don't want this CalPERS anymore. I want a new policy. Today, the most you might be able to get is about $5,000 a month. Now, certainly you can take more than that, but that's where we're going to start and that's what most people are buying. Keep in mind, most of you have a higher benefit than $5,000 a month right now. Most of you have quite a bit more than that per month. So no matter what, if you look at a new policy, you're probably going to be coming down a little bit in your benefits. So I structured this at $5,000 a month and the pool value would pay about three years. So it's a $200,000 pool. And again, most of my clients with CalPERS have a 10-year or an unlimited benefit or even a six-year benefit. And folks, today, you cannot get those benefits. They're not available. They're very hard to get. Most people who buy long-term care insurance today are buying about three years' coverage. And I put a 3% inflation rider on here. And again, a lot of you got these rate increases and this settlement letter because you have an inflation rider of 5% compounded. So let's just take a look at the numbers. So I'm going to scoot down to age 60. And for this benefit, so for a person, a male and a female, at age 60, to purchase $200,000 in a brand-new policy, here are the premiums per year. The male would be $1,992, the female would be $3,313. At age 65, the male would be $24,69, and the female $4,061. Now, just stop for a moment and think about what your premium is with CalPERS in comparison to what I'm showing you. And remember, think about what your benefits are with CalPERS while you're looking at this. Age 70, male is $3,220, female is $5,097 a year. Age 75, and this is the majority of people that I talk to, either 75 and above, male is $4,026, and a female is $7,385 a year. And that's just for a $200 benefit pool. Now, the reason I'm showing you this is because, two reasons. One is because people ask me all the time about getting them a new policy and I'm very hesitant to do that because the odds of them qualifying, they have to be in excellent health these days. Our underwriting has tightened quite a bit because of COVID, but also just that's where the long-term care industry is at right now. It's a hard, it's a hard product to get. You've got to be in pretty good health. The application time right now is over 45 days. So what that means is that even if you made an application right now, you still have to make a decision about what you want to do with CalPERS very soon, next week actually, for the option two. So what I would say to you is this. If you look at these prices and you say, well, actually, that doesn't look too bad. I think I'd be interested in that. Then what you want to do is select, at least select option two because you do not want to get rid of your, you don't want to mark on your form that you want to refund on your CalPERS until you have secured a policy. You do not want to do that. So you want mark number two because that will buy you some time. Or if you say, you know what, I just think I'm going to have either or. I'm either going to have a new policy if I can get it or I'm going to keep my CalPERS. And so I'm going to, I'm going to select either two or three. So as you can see, in very few instances, I would recommend for people to just get their refund out of their policy unless, like I said before, unless they have another plan that they can pay for their care or if they have another long-term care insurance policy. So the last thing, you guys, the important dates. The important dates, 9/22, replacement option. I would imagine that most people are going to say, I think I'm going to do that. And I'm trying to be very sensitive to how I'm going to say this because I don't know who this broker is that the settlement fund spoke about in their letter. All I'm going to tell you is from my perspective as a broker, I don't know what kind of insurance they would be able to secure with this type of a block of business. And again, maybe an insurance company would be. The issue with the replacement option is that it doesn't give you a lot of information on the benefits. I don't know that it will include home care coverage. I don't know that it will include assisted living. Maybe it will, but it did not note that on this letter. It said very clearly, it will pay for nursing home care. Now, I'm going to take that at its face value and I'm going to say, okay, if this replacement policy will only pay for nursing home care, that makes sense to me that they might find an insurer to do that. And why is that? Most people aren't going to go to a nursing home, folks. In all of the years that I've been in this business and I have filed hundreds and hundreds of claims, right now, we have 165 people who were managing on claim. I do not have anybody in a nursing home. And the reason being is because people use their long-term care insurance in their home or in an assisted living facility. Nursing homes are typically for individuals that are so severely and acutely ill and they have something that cannot be managed in assisted living, such as a feeding tube, a ventilator, or severe wounds. The other time that people go into nursing homes is if they are on Medi-Cal. And so once again, most people who have long-term care insurance are not of Medi-Cal condition. They will not be going on Medi-Cal. And so they're not going to be going to a nursing home. They're going to be choosing options outside of that setting. Why am I saying this? Because I just want you to understand that the replacement option, don't get your hopes up on that, okay? And I've been trying to think about how to explain this and it's almost like the devil you know versus the devil you don't. Although the replacement option would be an insurance company, it would be backed up by the state guaranteed fund, I just question what in the world the policy would look like. However, you can still select that option. And if you don't like it and it doesn't look good, then you can just choose to keep what you have or you can choose to get your refund. It says that very clearly in the letter that you can pick the second option because frankly, they need to know who's interested in a potential replacement. So let's just throw that out there a little bit and say, well, let's see what you got as long as they give you the option to reject it and it looks like they are. And so what that means is, like I said before, that's one of the safest options. Just check that one. If you don't know what to do, see what they come up with, if they come up with something and you'll know right away, oh, this is terrible or wow, I'm surprised. Thank goodness, yes, I will take that. The other thing is, which is important.
Don't like it.
I looked through the letter.
Excuse me, there's somebody who does, there's somebody who is not muted and their voice, it's a man, his voice keeps coming. He's labeled his iPhone, it's very distracting.
Thank you, Suzanne. The other thing that I want to point out, and I put the page number so that you would remember this. I have talked to some people and they have said, I'm just going to ignore this. I'm not doing anything. Do not do that. It says right here, no action, meaning if you don't take any action, it will automatically deem you to have selected a policy refund with the cancellation of your CalPERS. Do not do that. If you don't know what to do, pick number two. Like I said, so that at least you're still in the game and it's going to buy you some time. Now, the opt-out settlement, you have to decide by the 13th. So this, again, some people think is fairly risky because if you opt out and say, I don't want anything to do with the settlement. I don't want my money back. I don't want anything like that. What it means is that you're moving forward. You're going to keep your CalPERS. You're going to pay the premium or you're going to mitigate the premium and you're going to put your confidence in that you're going to have that policy and it's going to be there to take care of you if you need care. So being that this whole situation has caused, obviously, very, a lot of discontent with people. And as I said at the beginning, I don't know where this fund is going to be. I don't know how this is going to be in the future. What I do know, what I do know is that if you are over 75 and if you have health conditions, you better keep your policy. The other thing is, if you are at a point where you think you might want to go on claim but you don't know if you could or not, please keep your policy and do not opt out. Excuse me, keep your policy and do not ask for a refund. And that would be opting out of the settlement. You're going to keep your policy and then you can have some guidance on maybe how to mitigate your premium increase. So folks, I'm going to stop sharing for a moment. Oops, so sorry, I do have one more. I've already talked about what I advise my clients, but I'm just going to do a really quick recap. What have I advised my CalPERS client? I still say that CalPERS is still a reasonable option based on current premium costs. And I will say that again, even with the rate increases, when I have people call me with CalPERS and they show me their benefits and then what I do is I plug in their benefits and I show them how much that policy would cost in today's dollars, it makes sense to them, they get it. So CalPERS, despite everything that's going on, is still a reasonable option for you to have for your long-term care insurance. The second thing is, and I cannot stress this enough, do not make an emotional decision. We can all read all kinds of things and be really ticked off and annoyed about lots of things that's happening in the world today. But what I try and explain to my clients is, you've got to make a recent decision based on the risks and again, the potential need for long-term care, which is why you bought this in the first place. And guess what? That has not changed. The need for long-term care and taking care of that and paying for those expenses has not changed. In fact, if anything, it's gotten worse, in particular because of COVID. So do not make emotional decisions based on how angry you are. Look at your future potential need. Look at your finances. Talk to your family, maybe your financial advisor. And of course, you're welcome to shoot me an email as well. Understand when and how you should file a claim. And I don't know that we're going to have this webinar coming up by the end of the year. I don't think we do. I think I have this coming up next year. I'll be doing a webinar for Suzanne on how to file a long-term care insurance claim. That's a whole nother thing. But I just want to give you one quick example of a client that I talked to whose family member was going to opt to take. family member was going to opt to take the refund and dump the policy. And certainly, his argument was so good because his mom was going to get a hundred thousand dollars back. And he said, we're just going to invest this. And I said, I totally understand that. Now tell me a little bit about her health. Um, and as we were talking about her health, it was so abundantly clear that not only maybe should this parent be filing a claim, but that there was a little bit of, um, um, I don't want to say denial, that's probably too strong of a word, of the actual condition of the parent. And so a lot of times when I talk to people, family members especially, they, and I say, how is your mom and dad doing? Oh, they're great, they're fine. They're great for ninety, they're great for ninety-five. That's not what I'm asking. And so I really try and help people look at their situation and understand the risk of potential long-term care coming down the road. And you need to remember that before you make a decision. And the last thing is, try and get some advice on how to mitigate your premium increase before dropping your coverage. So for example, a lot of people I talked to have unlimited coverage or they have ten years. Well, gracious, I, the odds of somebody outliving ten years coverage is, is just, it's not even a thing, frankly. People don't need to have long-term care that pays for ten years. Um, there's a whole, you know, statistical reasoning behind that. But what I tell people is you can drop your coverage down to six or even five years and you still have phenomenal coverage. Um, so if you have an unlimited policy or a ten-year policy with a compounded inflation rider, that's one of the reasons you got a high rate increase is because your policy is considered kind of like a black hole, like mine, that's what I have. In that if I went on claim, the insurance company has a hard time getting their arms around, what are we going to pay for this person? We have to pay for them for forever. So you can reduce your coverage with CalPERS because those policies were very rich and that might be a good alternative to just dropping it. So now, let's see here, I'm going to stop sharing. And it is ten thirty-two. I stayed on target with my time. And Suzanne, I think the best thing to do would be maybe for you to look at the questions and.
Yes, I will begin reading some of the questions in the chat. If you wish to ask your own question, please raise your hand electronically and I will call on you. So the last question, and if we already filled it out and sent it in, can we change it? I'm assuming they're meeting their response to the, the letter.
Uh, so that's an excellent question. The first thing I would say to you is absolutely get a hold of them because that deadline is the issue. Um, and so you, I, I don't know if they'll allow you to change that, um, that selection, but you can get a hold of them and, and do that as soon as possible. If you have, you know, you feel like you've made the wrong decision.
Okay, thank you. Howard, he in? Howard, unmute yourself.
Okay.
Go ahead, Howard.
Thank you, and it's high on.
Oh, sorry.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, if you take a settlement as a taxable event?
I do not believe so.
Okay, and the mortality tables, you sort of briefly said that. I, for some reason, a long time ago, I read the mortality tables indicate something like eighteen months for an average stay um, before you die. So certainly ten years is, is superfluous.
May, may I respond to that? And, and most statistics that say eighteen months or two-point-five years, they're all focusing in on the nursing home event. And again, that, that statistic is for individuals that are in nursing homes, which is generally not the CalPERS profile. The average claim is three to five years. And when I say the average claim, I mean somebody filing a claim in their home, starting in their home, not getting care every day. I have lots of clients that are getting three to four days of care a week and moving on to a higher level of care like assisted living for a shorter period. So the claim event could be from three to five years on average.
Okay, thank you, and I, I really appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll do one from the chat and then I'll call on Rama. Um, so CalPERS only offered reduction to three years. Is there a way to make it to five years?
No. So CalPERS, um, is fairly strategic in what they're offering people. And let me give you the three-year thing to help you understand that. The three years is based on if you went into a nursing home. Because as you know, the CalPERS benefit pays more in the skilled nursing facility and they pay half at home or in an assisted living facility. Most people have that profile. Some people have coverage that pays a hundred percent. But the vast majority of CalPERS people, they get more money in a nursing home and half in home or assisted living. So if that's the case and you have a three-year policy, let's pretend that three years is three hundred thousand dollars. Let's say that's your benefit pool. Well, if you started off getting care in your home or you went to assisted living, that policy would last six years. It's the dollar value that you want to focus in on, not the, the year. Does that make sense? Yeah. And three years is still okay, frankly, you guys, because that's what most people are buying today. Three years just to cover the average claim event. Um, so I, I'd even feel comfortable with somebody reducing their benefit down policy instead of getting rid of it.
Okay. I want to come back, Mr. LaGriva, can you please mute your, your, uh, phone? Mr. LaGriva, please mute yourself. I wanted to come back to something that you mentioned, uh, previously, and just check on this. The values that are given for the proposed policy that they're trying to develop only give information for a nursing home. Is it true that they would also pay assisted living and they would also pay for in your, in your home? Or is that not determined? Um, will that ultimately be only determined after, uh, some time goes by? And we will then be able to make a choice depending on what they present?
Yes, that's a great question. So Suzanne, is there a way that you can mute that gentleman or?
I couldn't mute him, it said he was muted. I just kicked him out of the session.
Okay.
He can watch it on recording.
Okay.
The other, the other thing, the other thing before you go on is I suggest that you put your phone number on chat and then people can see it.
Okay, that's a great idea.
Back to my question though.
Okay, so that's what it appeared to me. And again, because they only gave that very little bit of information, it appears as though the replaceable policy is nursing home coverage only.
Yeah, that's absolutely useless for most of us. My wife, for example, is on claim and she has dementia and we have twenty-four-seven care and CalPERS is paying, albeit a small amount of that, twenty percent of what it costs me for, uh, twenty-four-seven care. Uh, but nevertheless, it's something, if a policy doesn't do that until you need a nursing home, my perspective would be that it would be useless.
I, I, if, if that in fact is the way it's going to be, that it's only going to be, um, nursing home only, I would never tell people to take that ever.
Okay, thank you very much for your.
Yeah.
All right, Deborah Coniak, followed by Anna Kuhn.
This is a great, great, this is a great, uh, presentation. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have a question similar to, um, what was just said. I have a family member on claim who has dementia and physical disabilities. Um, we thought we don't have to respond. Is that not true then to this letter?
Um, you shouldn't have to respond because they're in category C. Um, my clients that are in category C do not have to respond. There's, there's no boxes that they need to check, but it does look like they actually, if the settlement goes through, might get even more coverage.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything other than pay an increase in rates as that.
Well, I'm frankly, no, you won't, you won't have to pay the premium because remember this, folks. If you're on claim, you do not pay your premium.
Okay.
If you're getting benefits, you do not pay premium with CalPERS any longer.
Okay, I have to double check that since we manage the, the healthcare for her.
It used, right, it used to be coming out of her bank account monthly.
Right.
They stopped that and once, once she's passed that ninety-day deductible and gets money, she will not have to pay that premium anymore.
Okay, so we basically, um, at this point do, do nothing just because it's twenty-four-seven care, same situation.
Yep.
Okay.
And it, it's so hard. The thing that frustrates me about this situation is people, my clients on claim, their family members have gotten these letters and rate increases and they're, they're signing statements to reduce their coverage. I'm like, no, 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 do not reduce your coverage. You, you don't have to pay that rate increase as long as you're on claim. So it, it is a little confusing because there's two things going on. There's the rate increase that people have to decide what they want to do, number one. And then there's the settlement option that people have to decide what they want to do. So it's a bit overwhelming for people.
Okay, so they, what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, is that we, she will not have to pay that increase because she's on claim.
Yes, ma'am.
And if there's two, if there's two people in the family, unfortunately, husband and wife, both on claim, it's the same, right? Okay, thank you so much. This is really helpful.
You're welcome.
All right, next is Anna Kuhn, followed by Nancy Groves. Go ahead, Anna.
Hi, we're talking as if this settlement is going to go through, what are the chances that it won't be taken?
My opinion, uh, because I don't know the ins and outs of this, but I think it's very, um, I think it's based on the numbers and what the numbers are going to look like. And so it's, I don't want to say it's a risky thing, I think, to tell people to keep their policies because the whole point is to shore up the fund, et cetera, et cetera. But I have to look at each individual person and say what is right for them, not what's best for the settlement agreement, et cetera. What's best for an individual person? And most of the people that I've talked to, the best thing for them is to keep their policy.
Okay, so my situation is a little bit different. I just entered a life care community in which I will be taken care of. So I was dying to get my money back. Uh, so I'm hoping that the settlement will go through.
Okay, and may I, may I address that? Because you are in a unique situation. So just for people that don't know what that is, a CCRNC, a continuing care retirement community, is one that in fact you pay a, an upfront fee and you technically don't have to pay for your care, so to speak. In your situation, that is when taking the refund makes sense, as long as you understand that you're going to have to pay for your own home care in your apartment. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Well done.
Very good. Next is Nancy Groves, filed, followed by Gail and David. Go ahead, Nancy.
I just had a quick question. So I, I would actually, uh, wonder, and certainly I did. Uh, I can't, I didn't imagine that the state would not have, uh, looked at all insurance policies and, and sort of, uh, uh, that, that's what the State Department of Insurance was, to make sure that people don't get fleeced or that their, those insurance companies are doing things correctly. So I was just dismayed, dismayed to find out when I, if when I first got the letter, I looked it up on the Department of Insurance and they said, oh, yeah, that we don't cover CalPERS. I mean, that's a huge number of state employees. So why does that not fall under the state?
Um, that's a very good question. And I remember when CalPERS was being sold back in the day and that was the selling point, that we're not an insurance company. They are not an insurance company and therefore they cannot participate with the state guaranteed fund. Um, and I think people back then thought that that was a benefit to not have an insurance company.
All right, I have a question.
They are an insurance company, they're selling insurance. So that's not quite, I mean, I don't understand that, that doesn't even make sense to me. They are selling insurance, they're selling long-term care insurance, so.
I know. Yeah.
Okay, quick question from the chat, please. If I filled out the option for selecting another insurance company and it's not available, will CalPERS allow me to get back in?
Can you read that question again?
Yes, if I filled out the option for selecting another insurance company and it is not available, will CalPERS allow me to get back in?
Yes, so if you filled out option two and you want to have a look-see about the replacement policy and you don't like it or they can't come up with something, then CalPERS will notify everybody and ask you again, do you want to stay in with your policy or do you want to opt out of the settlement? Again, this is assuming that all this moves forward. So you're safe in that selection, you have not harmed yourself.
But again, in that one, the, um, deadline is December thirteenth for final.
Um, if you, if you opt out completely of the class action lawsuit, the deadline is the thirteenth of December. But if you choose to kind of hang in there a little bit until the dust settles, to see what the replacement policy will be, the deadline is the twenty-second.
Okay.
I'll think this month.
Of, of September, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Gail and David, your question, please?
Yes, I do not have inflation protection and have not received anything other than a letter saying my premiums could go up a hundred percent. Will that, for us without inflation protection, be given any options?
They'll give you options. They usually give at least one option. And your options are going to be to reduce the daily benefit or to reduce the entire pool value. And I don't know that you're, um, did you get a settlement letter also or no?
No, no settlement letter received.
I don't think you're going to be part of the settlement. So you only have one thing to decide when and if that premium increase goes through. And that is pay the premium increase or reduce your coverage in some way.
Okay, thank you so much. This has been great.
All right, next question from Richard. Richard, go ahead.
Hi, um, my question actually was very similar to the question that we just heard. I'm on, I'm on this Zoom call because I kept getting all these emails about a settlement, but I wasn't getting anything in the mail. Um, and I, I talked to the legal services firm that's handling the settlement and I learned that it's basically because the settlement applies to people who purchase their policies between nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and four. And I purchased mine in two thousand and five. So it seems like none of this even applies to me because I, I pretty much bought a maxed-out policy. The only decision that's going to apply to me is how I want to play around with my premiums to see if I can lower it when it does happen.
You're correct.
Thank you. Next is Gigi Simmons, followed by Roz Fabulous.
Yes, I have a question about, uh, when CalPERS might offer mitigation options again, since we've pa- uh, passed the deadline on that this time.
Mitigation options for a premium increase?
No, they gave it to us.
If you missed it and you decided to keep your benefits as is, they'll offer it again when they raise the premium again.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. The other thing I would say, the other thing I would say really quick is it doesn't hurt to give them a call and see if they would let you reduce your benefits. Yeah.
Yes, good idea. One other question. We're in a CCRNC and it was my understanding that the, that the insurance covered, uh, memory care will, um, and lots of things, not just the skilled nursing.
Yes, so the, the prior person that we spoke with about the CCRNC, um, you're correct. So the CalPERS policy, um, and, and I'm, I'm going to give you an understanding based on my clients that are in CCRNCs and have policies. You move into a continuing care community and you, there's no room in assisted living or memory care, it's full. So you get care in your home. Your pot, long-term care policy pays for care in your home and you stay in your home and you never leave. Or when there's an opening or if an opening is available, then you move in the community to memory care or assisted living. Your CalPERS policy will follow you and will pay your benefits in that setting as well, even though you have a CCRNC contract. So your benefits will pay wherever you're at in that community. And then once they start paying, your premium will be waived. For people who are self-insured and really don't need long-term care insurance and live in a CCRNC, I can understand why they want to refund, get their policy refunded. However, most of my clients that are. However, most of my clients that are living in CCRNCs have kept their policies and they are paying.
Just one, one more thing. On the mitigation, would that make sense to you to take advantage of that? I have lifetime and inflation protection to perhaps drop the light, the, at this point?
Absolutely, I would go down to ten or six years.
Right. But to try and do that right now.
Thank you. Before I introduce our next question, I want to let everybody know this session is being recorded, including a Q and A. If there is anyone who has asked a question that would like to have their question and the answer to it be edited out of the video, please send me an email to retiree link at UCSD.edu and we will cut you out of the video. So if anyone does not wish to have their question and the answer be recorded and included in the video, please let me know. Next is Roz, Roz Spafford. Roz?
Hi, thanks for calling on me.
Speak up a little bit, please, Roz.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, my camera is not working. My question, I'm from, I'm a retiring from UCSD. And my quest, we have seen some advice not to mitigate the premiums at this point. That is not to remove inflation protection or lower the number of years because there will surely be another rate increase. And if we can endure the rate increase at this point, we might want, very well want to save the mitigation that, you know, cutting down the inflation protection and whatnot for the next time around, otherwise we'll have nowhere to go. Do you concur with that advice?
I do, especially depending on your age. You sound really young, you sound like you're about thirty.
No, I'm surprised, but thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I, I really encourage our clients who are asking these questions to keep what they can with CalPERS and endure the rate increase, even though, understand budget-wise, that might not be possible. But because of what you said, odds are there's going to be another increase down the road. And so, yeah, if you can do the premium now, keep your benefits, especially if you're under seventy-five, you should not remove that inflation rider. That's very important. And then the other thing, just to kind of put your heart at ease too, it's always a good idea to get an idea of how much that same policy would cost on the open market now because you would see that CalPERS probably is still underpriced compared to what's available right now.
All right, before I offer the last question to David Fine, I want to remind everybody that the video of this event will be posted to the UCSD Retirement Association YouTube channel. Vanya, please put that in the chat for me. You can find it either by the link we're going to enter in the chat or you can just go to YouTube and type in UCSD Retirement Association and our seventy-plus videos will all come up. So go ahead, David, with the last class, last session question for the session today.
Yes, I have a question about management of CalPERS. I have heard that one of the reasons for the increases is that they have been too conservative compared to other companies and have not been able to get even average returns. And I want to know if there is, first of all, is there any way to compare their investment strategy with other insurance companies? And secondly, is there any chance that their management can be improved? Otherwise, the increases have no limit and the returns will bankrupt a company at some point.
That's a very good question, one that I cannot answer. But I've been doing a lot of reading myself to see, you know, how all this has happened. You can all find that information on the internet. But I would say in comparison, this is not an isolated problem with long-term care insurance in general. It isn't just alone, the fund's poor management, per se, if that's how you'd like to put it. It's also the statistics of going into how many people are going to, A, file a claim, how many people are going to keep their policies and what did they price it for? And all three of those things were wrong. And that's, that's company-wide. Every single company on the market did the exact same thing.
So, all right, we're going to wrap it up right here. We're at our one-hour mark. I have just posted in the chat the website for Linda Yonkey. You're all welcome to note that down. It has a little bit more information about her services and you can contact her through that website. And would you give your phone number one more time, Linda, please?
Sure. And before I give it, I'm going to say, please be patient. We're completely slammed right now. And of course, CalPERS is not my per se client base. And so when I talk to you, you have to have your information available for me because I don't have it. So if you want to call me, it's eight, five, eight, five, one, three, eight, three, five, one.
All right, and with that, I will say thank you very much, Linda. This was a terrific presentation. Come on, I want to see a bunch of hands clapping, seriously.
We're all in this together.